And we praise you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Journalist folks, pleasure and allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thanks to all of you. We've been given our minutes from our last meeting. I'd like to receive a motion.
Motion approved, second.
Has a motion proper second that our minutes will be approved from July 25th. All in favor, aye. Opposed by the same sign, ayes, have it in so carried. We have no employee recognition tonight. We have public hearing to receive comments on a board and planning and zoning's appeal recommendation to rezone property located at 613 Hines Street from traditional neighborhood residential to corridor mixed use.
I guess this is where the public hearing has been properly advertised and we would take any comments at this time?
Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, we declare that is, that's closed. Also, B, to receive comments on the boarding, planning, and zoning's appeals recommendation on a request to rezone property located 339, 389, and 425 Youngs Mill Road from traditional neighborhood residential and suburban single-family residential, traditional neighborhood medium-density residential.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing is properly advertised and we would take any comments at this time?
Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to address this? Please come forward, state your name.
Hi, Council. My name is James Urban, U-R-B-A-N. Dr. Edmondson, I haven't seen you in a while.
Been a long time.
Uh, I live at 420 Youngs Mill Road, which is across the street from this property to be developed. My concern is traffic, okay? Traffic on Youngs Mill, turning on North Barnard. There's been a number of wrecks there at the intersection where people fly over the hill, crash. Also, it backs up on Youngs Mill Road when it comes into the city. Sometimes it's backed up all the way to Hearthstone. I don't have a plat. Costello said he'd send me a plat. But I'm concerned that some of the property on the plat is so small that I don't know how a person could live there. They said there's three different parts of this development. I don't know, I haven't seen the plat. He showed me a copy of it, but I want, would like you to consider and look at that because I don't know what, uh, ten, traditional neighborhood medium-density is, how big it is. So, uh, because I've been living there for 36 years. I knew the property, previous property owner very well. Uh, her name was Vivian Phillips. Her husband was Elmore Phillips, who owned Farmer Supply, uh, and some of you people may have known him. But she wanted, when she passed away, she had a will designated it to lawyer Todd as the executor, and he was supposed to sell it immediately and all the proceeds go to children's because she had a child and she, he, she passed away. So, that was what it is. My concern really is traffic. And, you know, the stating that he has from the city, the people saying that it goes 30, 35, 37, as soon as they hit the Barnard Hill, it's 45 and above going down Youngs Mill and Hammett, the split, phew, there. And that's right, right in front of my house, but there's nothing I can do about it. You know, if a police officer caught them, you know, they'd give them a ticket, but that's all it is, sir. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Costello, did you want to address any of those concerns?
I can potentially address a few of his concerns. Actually, I had a conversation with Mr. Urban prior to the public hearing being announced. There was no plat per se. The first time that Mr. Urban requested a copy of the conceptual plan for this site, I provided him with a business card and indicated that I'd provide him with a copy of that conceptual plan tomorrow morning. Additionally, both he and Mr. Terry Stanford, who has since exited council chambers, expressed to me moments prior to this public hearing that they both had concerns about traffic along the Youngs Mill Road corridor. Like to remind the council that both Youngs Mill Road and Hammett Road are designated as primary transit routes in the northeast quadrant of LaGrange. Additionally, from June the 3rd through July the 5th, the LaGrange Police Department deployed their traffic counter along the Youngs Mill Road corridor immediately adjacent to Wood Avenue. During this deployment period, the average daily trip count was slightly more than 3,800 vehicles. That traffic was equally split to include both north and southbound traffic. So, there is every indication if those traffic patterns remain consistent, that traffic associated with this pending development would be distributed both northbound and southbound along the Youngs Mill Road corridor. There was also an indication made by Mr. Urban that there is excessive speed taking place along that Youngs Mill Road corridor. Just remind the council that consistent with the results obtained by this traffic counter as deployed by the police department, the 85th percentile speed of motor vehicles traveling both north and southbound on Youngs Mill Road is 43.9 miles an hour, with that portion of Youngs Mill being posted as a 35 mile an hour speed zone. Now, let me clarify that. The 85th percentile speed is the speed in which 85% of all motorists will not exceed. Additionally, this traffic counter confirmed the fact that the mean or average speed of motor vehicles traveling within this portion of Youngs Mill Road was 37.8 miles an hour. Again, this is posted as a 35 mile an hour speed zone. Finally, Mr. Urban had indicated to me prior to this public hearing that, you know, his observations indicated that vehicles were traveling in excess of 50 miles an hour. I responded to Mr. Urban by indicating that this survey indicated that only slightly more than 2% of all vehicles traveling on this roadway during this deployment period were exceeding the posted speed limit in excess of 50 miles an hour.
All right, thank you. What we could do, we can get a smart copy also and put it out there on the road, and that will get the attention of speeders on that.
I'm sure it will.
Yes, we can do that. And Mayor, could you put that down? So we'll get that done.
I, I do have a question for Mr. Urban. If, if you don't mind, just entertain me just for a second.
Yes, sir.
You are aware that they're getting ready to widen North Davis Road, right?
Yes, sir. To, to 4 Lane. I'm sure that that's gonna impact the traffic patterns on Youngs Mill and Hammett.
Right.
So, more people will be going that way. And like you said, 3,500 people going this way, more than south. Don't forget, there's two schools out that way. That's the reason for a lot of this traffic in the morning.
Right.
So, you know, what's gonna happen when it gets widened? There'd be more people going down these roads for nevras out of LaGrange.
Right. I, I just wanted to make sure that, that you as a resident were aware that we're growing.
Oh, yes, I, there's no doubt. I'm not, I'm not totally opposed to the, to the, to the thing. I'm just concerned about traffic. How are, how are we gonna envelop all this traffic?
Right.
Along with some of the, and the size of the lots, et cetera.
We're hoping that by forelanding that Davis Road, it would take some of the traffic off of Youngs Mill Road and they would do, go around the city of LaGrange.
Yep.
So, is that property in our electrical footprint, that, this development?
I can't say it was 100%. Certainty, Councilman, that it is, but I believe it is.
I mean, I know, I know where the, the light poles are on the property, where it connects, et cetera, because like I said, I've known the property for years and helped her out quite a bit. There's an electrical portion right at 3, not 339, the neck, right next door for the city to access it. It had to cut fence line a lot of times to get to it when power was out.
Yes.
So.
We appreciate your coming, and on a better note, thank you for all the hard work you did at Kroger's.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to address this? Seeing none, we would like to consider that hearing closed, that public hearing closed. All right, delegations, tonight, Mr. Tripp Foster. Pass Commissioner Foster.
I thought you said pass before me, I said hold on.
Praise God.
There you go, that's one of those congress, congregants right there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to say thank y'all for letting me be here today, and it was on short notice, and I'm very grateful for that. I want to say that those blazers look great, but everybody with the same thing, it just, it looks very presidential, so that's to honor you. Put my glasses on because I don't see as well as I used to on reading. My purpose here tonight is first of all to get some clarification on some things that, some communications in the community recently. And the reason I'm concerned is because not only am I curious as to what's going on, but I've had some residents, and I don't, I'm not an elected official, so I don't legally or politically represent anyone, and most of these are all elderly people, and they're concerned, so they called me up and said, hey, what do you know about such and such? And I said, well, actually, I only know one thing I read, and I haven't talked to the gentleman, so I don't know. And I, and then they started with dialogue about worrying about they're gonna lose their homes. I said, whoa, 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 you might be paying a debt on some word that's not even due. Let's get some communication and understand. So, here's my start. I appreciate you again for letting me be here today, and my topic is a great concern has arisen in this community, as I've laid over a Facebook post by the Honorable Councilman Charles. And I want to tell you before I read into it that I'm here on a mission of peace and understanding, nothing, nothing other than that. Several residents in the last 24 to 48 hours have contacted me, and they seem to be filled with fear and anxiety, feeling they're about to be displaced from their homes. While I surely hope Councilman Charles never intended to cause elderly people to live in fear, it has become a reality that I feel because of, we need better communication, that they're scared. And I come here, like I say, today in peace and for clarification, so that I can assure these good people tonight that Mr. Charles only wants to protect them and not to cause them anxiety or harm. He just wants to do good in this community. And so, some statements are concerning, and if you'll, if you'll bear with me, I, I wanna read it exact, so I don't misspeak or misquote anything. And I want to also say that Mr. Charles, in, in my understanding of things I've read in the past, he's been very informative to the community and very helpful, and I just think that it would involve a simple clarification, so this is long as, it says, "Good evening, my brothers and sisters. I come to you this evening with a warning," and that is emphasized, that word, "there are plans in this community to displace a lot of people. I stand before you today, ready to fight. It's time to take a stand." That being said, um, the word "warning" in large letters is captivating, and so as you read further, it says, "There are plans in the community to displace a lot of people," and then it goes on furthermore to say, "I stand before you today, ready to fight." Now, I have three questions based off that. What, may I respectfully ask, what is the warning? So I can relay that to these people tonight, so they'll go to sleep and not worry anymore.
So, as you relay the question to me, I want to ask them?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna ask them one by one.
Thank you, sir.
So, that warning comes from some information that I was privy to hear. I won't call the organization's name or anything like that, but yeah, that is, that's real.
Okay.
That's real.
So, so, Councilman Charles, what is, not revealing the source, but what is the warning that you want to send to the community?
The one is that some people will be pushed out of their homes to the outskirts of LaGrange.
Okay, thank you for clarifying item one of three. The second one is, it says, "Plans in the community to displace a lot of people," so I guess the first explanation would kinda include that one too. And then the last one, according, when you say you're, you're ready to stand before them to fight, I'm sure that's a noble fight, a cause that you are believing in, based off the information you've been given, and you feel like it's something worth taking a stand on. So, what entities, and there was the word gentrification, and I apologize for not being a Harvard graduate, so I had to look that up, but, uh, gentrification-
That didn't come from me, though. I didn't say gentrification.
No, no, a person commenting did. They brought that up, so I looked it up because I wanted to make sure I had an understanding somewhat of what that meant, and the definition was the process whereby the character of a poor urban area is changed by wealthier, wealthier people moving in and improving housing and attracting new businesses. These businesses typically displacing current inhabitants or residents in the process.
Right.
So, as a regular layperson reading this about three times, my understanding of the word gentrification in this process is basically money coming into LaGrange, buying up these properties, displacing the current residents, who, most of them in the zone, I'm looking at are very low-income and elderly people.
Right.
And under gentrification, when that has happened in other communities, people have been displaced from homes. So, it caused great concern with some of these residents, and 90% of them were elderly people. They were real worried that the home they finally paid for, that somebody's gonna take it from them. And I told them, I said, "Look, you might be paying rent on a word that'll never come due to you. Let's understand where exactly in town this is talking about, so it's not just widespread. Let's try to understand this process." You know, I understand about development and revitalization, and when you hear the word corridors, you know, 10, 15 years ago, I started hearing about corridors out in the county, going to kill, you know, wanting to clean them up, and, because they were gateways to the city. And who wouldn't want a nice entrance when people from outside LaGrange or prospective businesses, or their companies that they hired to, to vet our community, our infrastructures, our utilities and so forth? We want to make a good showing. And unfortunately, sometimes in these processes, things do happen where people get moved outside of their areas that they're commonly living in, and sometimes people forget about them. And so, I'm trying to understand that that's what you were getting at, so that I can relate that to these people, and so I can feel good about it. And like I say, I came here for clarification, and I'm not asking you who said it, that doesn't matter right now. It's just that, where in the city specifically do you feel the most concerned about this potential displacement?
So, I'm answering your first question, Phil, when you say, "I was ready to fight." So, District 2 is the most distressed area in this whole entire city.
Okay.
When I said I was ready to fight, I made a vow to the, my constituents and the people in District 2, that if I got on this seat, that I would keep them informed. That's why I hold town hall meetings, and I said I will fight for the best interests of District 2, and that's exactly what I plan on doing. I'm not gonna get in here with the back and forth about what organization is gonna do this, because everybody can see it. Everybody can see that there will be a sense of displacement of some people in some of these distressed and poor neighborhoods. I did a speech this morning. I won't go into that speech, but I talked about slum lords. I talked about the substantive living conditions that people in District 2 are living in, because I myself, I grew up in District 2, I'm a product of District 2, and I myself, like you said, you know, I got phone calls, a lot of phone calls, so you can imagine-
Not a lot, but several.
Well, you could, well, me, I've got, since I've been on the council-
Lots of.
I have seen people come up here to that polling where you're at, and talk about the deplorable conditions that they living in, and we don't do nothing at all to these slum landlords. Maybe we can't, but I'm gonna bring it to the, I'm gonna let everybody know what's happening. I'm not gonna let nothing sneak up on anyone. Now, displacement, and if you wanna use that word gentrification, that probably is upon us right now. I throw the word out there.
It's a true word, and it does happen in some communities. I just want to make sure it's not gonna happen here.
There's a lot of people that look at my Facebook posts, they look at this, and they look at that, but I will say it right here in front of everybody, face and council mayor, city manager, everybody. There's a possibility of it. I said that I would defend District 2 and tell them the truth, and I would do everything in my power to make District 2 better, and that's exactly what I'm going to do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so very much.
And I know this is your first term, four years on the council, so may I share one brief thing? It'll take 30 seconds, we're gonna not sit down. It is very important that I, I respect and appreciate your passion for your constituents. They need people from each part of the community to, to stand up for, for them. They do, that's why you are a representative.
Yes, sir.
But it's very important that, and I'm not criticizing you because I have made mistakes.
Okay.
Unintentional, but I still made them. I'm a very passionate person, and sometimes I used to let passion get the best of me, even though the cause was noble. It is so important that with this council, with any governing body, but specifically with these gentlemen that you're working with, that y'all are, y'all are on the same side of this bench, that when things get to you or concern you, that even if they anger you, and sometimes there's righteous causes for that, be very careful how y'all work with one another when, when you're not happy, because it can be injurious to your future work, because it takes, it's checks and balances. They need you for votes for certain things, and you're gonna need them, and if you really wanna help your people the best, you, you'll work real hard to do this one thing. I saw a plaque, and I shared it with my friend, Mr. Meredith out here, that said kindness is Christianity with its work clothes on, and it showed a picture of a man in overalls, like, like he'd been out working in a ditch. Sometimes when people, you have to get down in the ditch and work extra hard to remain calm and kind still while standing up for your cause, and I've made that mistake before in my life, and it cost me some things, and I don't wanna see it cost you. I wanna see this city move forward, and you're very important to this city, so I, God bless each and every one of you, and that's why I said I come here in peace, not to criticize-
Right.
And for clarification, so that I can have more confidence in what the work you're trying to do, and I can relate to these elderly people who are nervous wrecked. So, I'm just letting them know, they're not coming to take your house next week or something.
Let me say one thing before you, excuse yourself.
Yes, sir.
I sleep very good at night, because I know the decisions that I make-
Yes, sir.
That God feel, and I'm doing the work on his behalf for his people.
I respect that, but also remember, communication is key, so that your constituents aren't in fear and anxiety.
We, we gotta go back and forth. We, we gotta go back and forth.
I'm here in peace, thank you, Mr. Charles.
We gotta go back and forth.
I have a question for you, Mr. Foster.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gaskin.
Are you a property owner in the rail district?
I own multiple properties at or about the rail district, in the rail district, and out in the unincorporated area of the city, yes, sir.
Okay, and we thank you for being a property owner in the area, in the community, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
I appreciate you, and thank you for your passion.
Okay, I want to, I want to say this before you leave.
Yes, sir, Mr. Urban.
As long as I'm mayor-
Yes, sir.
There will be no gentrification here in LaGrange, the city of LaGrange.
Yes, sir.
All of us are very passionate, and we wanna make sure that our citizens have good homes to live in, but as far as displacing someone, that is not our intention.
I understand.
We are here to make sure that everyone has a fair share of what the city of LaGrange has to offer. But I'm saying this council, brother, Mr. Charles is very passionate about what he does, but this whole council, we wanna see LaGrange grow in a most positive way.
Yes, sir.
And that does not mean displacing anyone.
And I respect that, and I just wanna make sure the council understands, I'm not implying that this city would, would be a part of that gentrification process. As I aforementioned, I just learned what the word was today, I read it up, because I got some understanding on, to, to understand that it does happen in some communities, but I know that we are passionate about protecting our citizenry-
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure that every one of you will work hard together to make sure that this does not happen in LaGrange, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all so, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, petitions communications authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute an agreement between the city of LaGrange and Red Speed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So, for several weeks now, we've discussed cameras and school signs. The agreements are now prepared, and then on discussions with the school board, and they are supportive of this initiative, so at this time, council wants to move forward. We need a motion.
Motion to move forward with Red Speed, second.
Has a motion proper second that would move forward with Red Speed, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes, have it, and it is so carried. Authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute an agreement between the city of, I'm sorry, the LaGrange Development Authority and Remington, Rem arms.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the LaGrange Development Authority has reached terms with Rem arms to sell that entity, approximately 43 acres, near Ridley Lake, and the city funded that, the purchase of that land many years ago, and as part of that agreement, the city has to agree to the terms of the conveyance, and through your vote tonight, you have the ability to consent to the conveyance under the terms of the agreement.
Motion proceed with commands, second.
Has a motion proper second that would proceed, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes have it, and it is so carried. Authorizing the city manager to purchase 406 East Depot Street.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. For several months, we've been in discussions with Martin United Methodist Church to purchase this property. The purchase price is $40,000. The intent of the council is to preserve the African-American history in our community. It's that, council wants to move forward with this initiative. We need a motion.
Motion to move forward and be neighbors with Mr. Tripp Foster, second.
Would you clarify your motion, please?
A motion move forward and buy the property on East Depot, and Tripp Foster is a property owner on the East Depot. God bless you, sir.
Second.
Has a motion proper second that we would purchase the property, move forward, purchase the property at 406 East Depot Street, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes have abstained, one abstention. All in favor, raise your hand. One, two. All, all abstention? Okay, and it passes.
We're neighbors.
All right, city manager report.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I have several tonight. The financial statements for July, as well as the payments of bill over $2,000, have been distributed as part of your agenda packets. Don't have any particular comments, but we'd be glad to answer any questions. It's very early in our new budget year.
Any question for our city manager of financial statements?
Are we on track so far with our income? I know we made some adjustments there during the budget time. I just wanna make sure that we're not tracking to the negative, too tough.
Yes, sir, we're tracking close to budget right at this point. I mean, we're only a month into the budget, so it's a little early to tell, but we are tracking close to budget projections.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Another question for the city manager of budget, I'm sorry, on the financial statement. Okay?
We, this morning, heard a funding request for $450,000 from ECHA, which is the Enlightenment Center for African-American History. They are seeking funds to purchase property and do some exterior building upgrades of the Isaiah Epps House, which is along Hamilton Road corridor. It's council's pleasure to move forward with that funding request. Do so at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion that we table that till further meeting, just to get more information on it before we make a vote.
Second.
All right, has been motion proper second, we table that. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes have it, and so carried. All right, declaring property located at 300 Country Club Road as surplus.
Yes, sir. So, we've owned this property for several years. It was acquired as part of the Roundabout project that we did there. Council has been in discussions about basically selling the property, and we do that through a process of declaring surplus and taking bids. Council directed staff to have an appraisal done. That appraisal came back at $172,000, which staff would recommend if council wants to move through this process to establish that as a minimum bid. But it's council's pleasure to move forward, declare surplus.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we declare this property at 300 Country Club Drive surplus and declare a minimum bid on this property at $172,000.
Second.
Has a motion proper second that would declare this property, 300 Country Club Road, surplus, and minimum bid is 172. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes have it, and so carried. Former Newman property.
Yes, sir. And finally, we discussed this morning our request for funding sewer infrastructure improvement amount of $1.5 million for the former Newman property that runs along Hootie Bridge Road. It's council's pleasure to move forward with this request. We do so at this time. We need a motion and a vote.
Motion to table, to later date. Maybe we'll come up with some sort of funding later on.
Where would this funding come from if we did it?
Grants.
Have to come from reserve funds.
From the third.
Maybe get the notion to raise utility rates, I don't know.
Have a motion on the floor? And it dies for lack of sec, uh, for lack of a sec. Okay, former Newman property funding request, 1.5.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to not approve the 1.5 million.
Second.
Has been motion proper second that the funding be denied. All in favor of denial, raise your hand. Okay, all in favor of approving. All right, and it, and it is denied. It so passes, all right. Resolutions, first reading of all- First reading of ordinances to rezon property located at 613 Han Street from traditional neighborhood residential to quarter mixed use.
An ordinance of Mayor and Council of the City of LaGrange to amend zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located on Han Street and owned by Kimball Carter to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix and effective date, and for other purposes.
To rezon property located at 339, 389, and 425 Youngs Mill Road from traditional neighborhood residential to suburban single-family residential, traditional to, traditional neighborhood mixed density residential.
An ordinance of Mayor and Council of the City of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located on Youngs Mill Road and owned by Vivian Phillips Charitable Trust to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix and effective date, and for other purposes.
All right. Second reading of ordinances modifying the speed limit on certain city streets to conform DOT recommendation.
An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of LaGrange to modify the law for speed limits on a certain city street to conform to DOT recommendations to repeal